All right, so we will have an opening by Councilor Barnes.
I just read that. Good thing you didn't need a lot of prep time for it. Family, father, we're grateful for the opportunity we have to be here in a town council meeting and the opportunity we have to serve and we pray that the expert will be with us as we deliberate in our meeting this night. Everything that is said and done will be in accordance with thy will. We're grateful for the opportunity to serve and pray that we will serve well in our capacity as town council members. Grateful for all the assistance we get from our administration and we pray that thou bless them too. And we pray for this name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. We'd like to welcome the media, Channel 32, with Tori Mackalty, and welcome Renee Seeburn, who had a bad fall and is still there at her job. Thank you so much.
We don't want to talk about that.
All right, we have about 10 minutes before our delegations, so we're going to try to go through the agenda the way it is. Three additions and adoptions of the agenda. We need to add two items. One under 7G, the library ladder requests, and under 12B, confidential items, illegal matters that will have to be dealt in camera. There is a change. The delegation of Del Camune and Rock Price and Camera will take place at 7:30. So what we're aiming for is a 7 o'clock dinner. The town employees have made us dinner, so we'll need to try to stick to that 7 o'clock as much as we can. All right? Thank you. So anybody wants to make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the changes.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, now there's one more addition. I talked about that.
Oh, you're going to put this one now?
Yeah, that would be the emergency services.
Under 7GH?
Yep.
EMS, okay. Thank you, Councilor Barnes. All right, so we have a motion to adopt the agenda with the changes by Councilor Edmonds. All in favor? Thank you. All right, we're going to go on the five adoptions of minutes. There are first of all the minutes of the regular council meetings of November 25, 2014. Some of you may have noticed that the third reading of a bylaw did not have the printed word "carried." It was "Bylaw 1618 Traffic Safety Bylaw." That's a little bit of a technical glitch, and Graham kind of fixed that glitch, so it'll be corrected. Any other correction on this, on those minutes? If not, I need a motion to approve them as corrected.
I will approve them as corrected with the addition of "carried" under the third reading of bylaw 1618.
Thank you very much. All in favor? Thank you. We now have to approve the minutes of the public hearing of November 25th. And if you remember, that had to do with the bylaw 1606D regarding the electrical distribution bylaw. So we just need a motion.
I'm going to accept the minutes from the public hearing.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Sitting down, all in favor? Thank you.
Can I comment on that?
Please go ahead.
I heard on the news this morning that the electrical rate has been dropped. Is that right? Because something to do with the city of Lethbridge, they were adjusting their rates to their customers, and it had something to do with that. Probably the same process we went through?
Yeah, that's what I was going to suggest.
Send out a statement.
It's probably for the same reasons we adjusted our rate and reduced them is because the transmission rate that was anticipated from Fortis was not approved. So I would imagine it was the same rationale, but I don't know the details on that.
Yeah, I just heard on the news that they were adjusting everything now.
Thank you. All right, so we could go to...
Did we approve that?
Yeah, we did approve the minute.
As the public hearing?
Yeah, which was voted on it. Yeah. Okay, we will go to item six. Marian is going to give us an update regarding the Golden Atkins subdivision and the state of completion of the project.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In your package, there was, I have no one do up a report for you on the finalization of the conditions of subdivision. That's just for council information only. That will go back to the municipal planning and subdivision authority to give their approval for us to sign up on that subdivision once all of those conditions are met. But it appears from that that they're close. I would suggest probably 99% complete of those conditions. One of the things that was asked of us at the last meeting that I've had a chance to look at was council's been talking about the private road issue. And the suggestion was that the road remain private, but retain the liability from the town. If I recall correctly, that was Mr. Atkins' proposal. So I did a little bit of investigation on that and first of all, talked with our insurance company. They said that we could be removed from the liability as long as the town was listed as an additional insured on the homeowner's insurance. And they wanted to make sure that that contract was very precise as to list what the town would do as far as maintenance and upkeep of that road. The other call I made was to legal for their advice. Their suggestion to us is that it could remain as or should remain as a private road, which would ensure that the homeowners association was liable for any activity on that road that would have to be signed as such. And the recommendation would actually be that it be in somewhat of a gated community so that it's more controlled. They did suggest that we not agree to replace the road, that if they own it, they should own it. We could enter into an agreement for maintenance such as snow removal or those kind of things. But it was not the recommendation that we have the responsibility for replacement. The only challenge that she saw in that was that with the homeowners association owning the land, sometimes as those organizations grow and expand and the length of time ensues, they tend to become a little bit more disorganized. And sometimes without that organization, it may be a little bit difficult for them to uphold their obligations under the contract. But she said this has been done in other areas and they, of course, would be willing to ensure that we have a proper agreement in place to manage that.
All right, so essentially, what we need from council is a recommendation to administration as to the type of agreement that we want to enter in, which is actually the agreement to keep the road private with the ownership to remain with the association of homeowners.
Correct.
Yeah, so essentially, do you need a motion?
Yes, I'd like to have a motion on record so that I could report that back to the property.
All right, so we could have a motion, we could have question afterwards if you want.
I can make that motion that the roadway and the development, the private roadway, with the homeowners association assuming the responsibility, the ownership of it and the liability.
And then can we just add to the motion, if I might, Councilor, that the town would be responsible for maintenance such as snow removal?
And I'll add on to that.
Do we want to contract that?
We would contract with the homeowners association.
So maintain the services. So that the town also would contract out the maintenance services for that road. To go along with that motion.
Okay, any questions to administration regarding the legal information? I think it's wise to have received that legal advice. It kind of protects the town.
Well, I just, you know, looking at this here, I think it's a really big decision that, you know, for generations will affect us. Creek Side, is that one word or two for the road name?
Creek Side.
Sorry, it's not. You want one word as well in here. You want one word as well.
Oh, I see. And, oh, I don't know. It could be, it'll be a one word.
I think a one word will work better.
It looks like two there.
Yeah, I agree with you. So all in favor? Thank you. So I appreciate that, Marian. It was an important piece of information we needed. All right, we don't have a delegation quite right now, so we're going to carry on with 7A, local access fee. If you read in your background, starting in 2011, there was a 5% local access fee that was paid by those who wanted to use a distribution system. And what we have in 2015 is a wording on the rate schedule that was not exactly precise enough. Therefore, we need a motion to make it precise. The schedule where the LEF is a chart determined by the town council that applies to all electric site in the town of Carston. So what we need is a motion to make it precise. Councilor Ben, read as, you want to make that motion to make the 5%?
I make a motion that effective January 1st, 2015, the local access fee noted in by law number 1606B, the schedule A for the electrical distribution system shall be equal to 5% of the distribution tariff charges and applies to all electrical sites in the town of Carston.
Thank you.
Question? Now, does that mean that they're paying us 5% for the usage of our?
Correct. It's a revenue to the town.
What it means is that the user of the utility, so any individual that uses town electrical would pay a 5%, just like...
Like a franchise.
And they always have paid it.
Yeah.
It's just, it's like a franchise fee, and it's just council established it a number of years ago to assist with the revenue and the ability to be able to continue to invest in the asset.
Okay. And if you see a little bit more going on in the background there, this rate will be from here on included inside the bylaw.
Yes, I've asked Kevin to include the rate rather than just the terminology, but to actually include the rate so that it doesn't require a resolution of council. It's part of the law.
Yeah, from here on forward.
Correct. So we have a motion on the table, all in favor? Thank you. All right, let's move on to the recommendations that we have on the 7B1, the policy S65 subdivision extension approval policy. That is something that came out of the CCW, so I need a motion to approve that. Councilor P. Roy.
So I move to approve policy S65, the subdivision extension approval policy.
As given?
As custodied.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? All in favor? Thank you. We have policy...
Does that mean that we now have given the extension to the Atkins subdivision?
No, 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 no. That is a policy that regulates the subdivision extension approval. If you remember, it was the municipal subdivision committee that really wanted to have something a little bit more precise.
Madam Chairman, just for clarification, there was a resolution of council to extend the Atkins subdivision for six months, I believe, about a month ago. So that's already taken.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure.
And that extension was granted by this council, whereas this new policy would allow the subdivision authority to grant future extensions.
Right, okay, super.
Well, that is well done. Did we vote on this one? Yes, we finished voting. Welcome, Dexter. Should I call you chief still?
No.
It's such a pleasure to have you with us and to be able to help us understand a little bit more what your people really had to go through with the school system as it was constituted in the past. And maybe you'll be able to help us understand also how it affects this generation out of the ensuing generation. So if you'd like to come forward, please come ahead.
Yes.
Yes, and you didn't, did you bring your video? First you.
Actually, do we have a white on here?
Yes.
We did, okay. So it's actually, let me just set that up. Thank you for the honesty and opportunity to share a little about something that occurred not very long ago, but the lingering effects are partially what we see today. And I'll back up just a little bit. I'm, I'd like to guess my age, honestly. But I'm of the generation that by the time I became of school age, the requirement to attend residential school had been lifted. So I actually, my first semester of kindergarten was actually here in Carston. My older brother and sister, who are twins, are only four years older than me, but they were locked into the system already. So I was just at the very tail end of it. So I didn't attend residential school. I've got eight older brothers and sisters and, no, sorry, I've got seven older brothers. I'm the eighth. Each and every one of them attended residential school. It was mandatory. So there was a bit of an understanding I had to undertake throughout my life because I could see that they processed information differently than I did. I could see that they expressed themselves differently than I did, and I didn't understand that early on. So I began to try to alienate myself from them because I couldn't understand that type of process, the thinking process that they had undergone. To them, it was normal. It was a regular way to function. To me, I found I wasn't be able to connect with them, and it just kind of drew us further apart, only until I began to realize, and this began to come up more often than in my years of getting educated, that there was a difference only because we were raised differently. And it was so different that I knew I was raised by my mother and dad, but they were raised in a system of the residential school. And I wanted to get away so, so much and not be around any of it that I actually went to school in the United States for college. I was talented enough to undertake a rodeo scholarship, so I up and left. And I came back home, educated, and kind of went job to job until I landed the employment with the federal government. I was there for 18 years now. Around the 16th year mark, there was an announcement by the federal government, the Harper government, that they would be giving a, well, we were, in short, they called it a 10-3, $10,000 for those who had attended residential school, $3,000 for every year after the first year that you attended. But along with that, for those frontline workers in Service Canada, which is whom I was employed for over 18 years, we had to go undertake a training just in case those that came to apply for their 10-3 began to disclose. And if they began to disclose, what were we to expect possibly? And so I was part of a project in order to put a sensitivity training package together. Now, throughout my years, like I had mentioned, I was studying the difference. And the more I studied, the more I began to understand. So by the time this came along, I had my theories, not only about those who attended, but I took it one step further. What about the generation after? Nobody was talking about that because nobody even knew what the effects were of those who had attended. So when I, when we went through the training or putting together the package, and I brought that part into it, it opened it even more to those who were then the so-called experts because they never even thought of that. So what the package we had come away with was so powerful that when we began to train all Service Canada employees across the nation, whether you were native already or you were non-native or colored or Asian, they couldn't believe what had transpired early in the 1800s up until just recently. They couldn't believe the impact because it was to them, we were natives, we're those people who did that thing. We were easily pointed the finger, those people who do those things. Very negatively, so when we hit the training session, every single time, clear across this country, everybody was in tears because they couldn't believe it. And to me, that was more of a, it really brought it home because now I could, all my theories were now proven. I had so many of them because I had to, because after all, I needed my family. I needed to understand them. I need to understand my mother, including my father, and what they had gone through. So now going back, so that was my years with Service Canada, when everything really came together. I, when I put the package together, I developed my own package as well. So that when I go into the community, into native, non-native communities or native communities, elders or the young kids, my package was directed at all of them and they could all relate to that. So I'm also a musician, and that was one of the probably the good positive things in my life because everybody needs something to take away from the day-to-day stuff. You're all politicians. So am I. I like having something over here that I can forget what's going on here just in case. There's some times it gets pretty stressful. So being a musician, I was able to do that, but I was also able to release a lot of emotion and feelings in songwriting, in guitar playing, in piano playing. So I took it a next step further. I began to also put together a package that enclosed, encompassed music and video. Okay, so that's, I developed a song, and it was immediately after the Harper apology because for me, that was one thing I thought, oh my God, I can't believe he's actually doing that. I can't believe that he's actually saying, "I'm sorry," because no one had ever done that. For those that had went, the impact was, you know, a lot of them felt it, but a lot of them, because if you grew up in a system in which you're punished for just about every emotion, every word that comes out of your mouth, you put up a wall, you put up a barrier so thick and so tall that even that apology didn't help. So that means, what I'm saying is, for those that are affected, some of them, it's so hard and so deep. No matter how much you say you're sorry, it ain't going to help. But it's going to be, it's going to have to come from them. Somehow, some way, they're going to have to find a way to say, okay, if somebody's apologized, maybe it's a start that I can clear. But what I began to notice is for those that went, a lot of them didn't realize how they were affected. That's where that barrier was. So if I began to explain or began to disclose some information that may be related to them personally, it might just click something. "You're right," they would say. Some of the elders would say, you know, "I've never been told that. It makes a lot of sense. No wonder I'm this way, or no wonder my kids are this way." Because one of the worst things that could have happened in residential school was they took away your ability to feel or to be emotional, okay? You weren't allowed to cry. You weren't allowed to love. You weren't allowed to show any kind of emotion because along with that came the strap. Even there was a story, and I love talking to those that had went because hearing their stories and relating it to my theories, it just made them true. Two sisters grew up together, here's one story. Two sisters grew up together, very loving, until they went to residential school. No more hugging, no more holding hands. The only touching that they were able to do was when they passed on the stairway, a wreath, touching with the hand. But they yearned to hold and hug each other as sisters could, would do as children. That was stripped away. So if you think about that, what happens if you continue to grow up in a system like that? You grow up without emotion. Are you capable then of raising children? You all had children, you were all children yourselves at one point. You loved to be hugged. You loved to be told, "I love you." But they couldn't do that because it was taken away. So raising a kid in that environment, any psychologist would tell you, that's damaging. You're asking for so much damage in the future when those kids grow up. So when these kids that we see, one of them, grow up in that kind of environment, you always question, why wasn't I loved? Why didn't any emotion was brought to me that I can see from other parents bringing to their kids? How come my parents aren't like that or not like that? But then I began to understand, once I began to realize the impact, I began to ask my mother questions. I couldn't ask my father questions because he had passed away. It was too late. But from what I was told and what he had gone through in residential school, there was a lot of understanding that I had, I was able to make, but it was too late again. He already passed away. So when my mother, when I was asking my mother questions, she would say, you know, "This is what I had gone through." And I would say, you know, "Mom, how come? You know, when I was a kid, you did this or you didn't do this?" I couldn't get an answer. The only thing I could relate, or she could relate to that was, well, when I was in residential school, we couldn't do this, we couldn't do that. We weren't allowed to do that. It was bad to do that. So there was no nurturing of children. So what happens to children that are not nurtured? They can grow up in a system. They can grow up being abusive. They can grow up in addictions. So many negative things can transpire out of that. So the impact, when I began to realize that, I began to, first of all, it was too late, like I said, too late to love my father, but I love him. But I couldn't tell him. It's too late. I can tell my mother now, she's still loving. My brothers and sisters, I see what they have gone through, and I can tell them, "I love you," because I understand what they had gone through. But do you think that eventually, like eventually my mother began to hug and kiss, but do you think that was difficult for her? Extremely, because it was, it wasn't something they did. But as a kid, like I said before, we loved to get hugged. We loved to get told, "I love you," and get nurtured. And so do our grandkids. So it was the kids and grandkids that really changed her, and I can see that change happening in my brothers and sisters because they're now becoming grandparents. Grandkids are wanting to be hugged and loved, so they're getting changed and, you know, fortunately, in a good way. But it wasn't, it wasn't going to happen if they didn't have kids. So again, for those that had gone, if they're not capable and if those kids don't receive that nurturing, we're seeing the next generation after residential school falling into addictions. falling into addictions, falling into crime, violence. There's one other thing here that kind of, it's almost the same in a lot of communities, but I can pinpoint it in a native community. The family dynamics. I said I had eight. There's eight in my family. But really, do you want to know how many there are? There's about seventeen. Why is that? Because they didn't know how to love. So if you perceive sex as love, you're gonna go from sex over here, to there, to there, to there, and what's gonna happen? Do you have children there, 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 there? That's a difficult thing to understand and for, to be accepted. And that's, and that's a lot, that's a pretty common in native communities. So that complicates even things even more. Because if my father was split between two families, maybe three, maybe four, that complicates things internally, family-wise. And it's not a healthy relationship unless everybody can understand why they have come to be, where they came to be, why there's another family over there that they, they call half-brother or half-sister. So there's, if you begin to understand that, you can probably begin to understand who you are as well. But a lot of, a lot of people don't have that opportunity. You hear a lot, or probably know a lot about addictions and everything. Once you begin going down that road, it's pretty hard to back up. It's only up to them. So for me, as a, as a leader of the Blood Tribe, someone asked me, "What are you doing about the problem?" Well, really, that's a long question. Because the question is, "What do you eat?" I can provide the infrastructure. Or the old saying, "You can take a horse to the water trough, but you can't make him drink." So I can provide, and help provide the services available for those I need to. But it's really up to them. Patricia, my wife, is gonna be talking about that on her own, she's already doing that. She's currently obtaining her degree in Addictions Counselor. She's able to, to connect those two that I've just talked about. And she's learned a lot from what I've learned. And so that's really helping her in her studies. How much time do I have? A few minutes?
A few minutes.
Okay. Do you have time to show that? Okay? Where's your? I'm gonna show you something here that I put together. And it's something that I, I use. I had to go right up to the very top of the, very top of the head of our country to add some of the things that you're gonna hear in there.
We're having glitches today with this miserie. Worked a few minutes ago. Before you came, we tested it, and our son is not responding.
It didn't work good yesterday either. No, it didn't.
It's a little temperamental today. But I appreciate what you're saying, Dexter, because we, we can see the, the product of some of those souls that have been negatively impacted. And we see them in our town. And it pains us all to see that. But we really don't know how to help. It's so difficult for us, we want to see if we can help.
Yeah. But we'll give you a small example of what I was able to do in a short while. Have any of you gone, drove through the reserve, through Highway 509, and come out just before Coldhurst there?
Yeah.
Well, I live way on the very north end. It takes about, almost an hour to get here. For two seasons, I'm a boxing coach as well. For two seasons, I ran the boxing club here in Moses Lake. And I had children, twenty-five, sometimes a night, coming out and working out in a very positive environment. I was coaching them, I was exercising with them, and at the end, we had a healthy meal. Could be a small, just vegetable dips and things like that. But that little time that I had spent with them, I began to notice and get feedback years later of the impact of just that little time I was spending with them at the boxing club. They're not being given that in any form or fashion without that. So let me, you know, we take a lot of things for granted. There was a big tournament in Edmonton. I picked the kids up. We'd go past Fort MacLeod. And one of them in the back of the van says, "Wow, I've never been past Fort MacLeod." We all kind of laughed a little bit. We get to Calgary. "Wow, I've never seen Calgary before." And then another one says, "Wow, I've never been past Calgary before." We keep going, we get to Red Deer, time to have supper. We go into Boston Pizza. "Wow, I've never been in a Boston Pizza before." And I thought, "Oh my gosh." Wait till we get to Edmonton. Because I'm gonna bring you to the West Edmonton Mall. You can see that was just a, you know, they couldn't believe. They were in another world. Things that we've probably done several times throughout our life now. We take it granted. So I did, I did that for two years, but I couldn't do it anymore. Because again, it's a, it's a difficult drive, especially in the winter. So when I was able to, or tried to hand it off to somebody else, there was nobody there to hand it off to. And I did it out of my own, my own time, my own money. And I've done it for thirteen years now. I still do it. And my wife can tell you the times that I'm away, from my own kids, my own house, trying to do that for the kids. Because for me, I grew up as a boxer. There's one phrase that I made up. And I always pass this to the kids. Because as a boxer, you don't want to train kids to go fight in the street, or fight in school, or fight their other brothers and sisters. No, it's the discipline behind boxing. And the phrase goes, "I've never made a living boxing, but the discipline from boxing has helped me make a living from it." And that's what I tell the kids continuously. It's that discipline that can help them. So I can do my little bit. Really, I've gone through twenty-eight boxing coaches. They've lasted more than maybe a month, if that's it. So you know, there's, there's very far a view. I thought so, I can try to continue to do that. There was one other fella, he was non-native, who did that. His name was, oh, now I forget his name. He was a boxing coach in Leftbridge, the Friendship Center, for years. Years he was the boxing coach, dedicated his time to it. And he has the same kind of story. He did it because he saw something, and he saw purpose in it. So with that, I'm gonna, I'll get you to order this up.
Is that working now?
Yep.
Oh, perfect. Okay.
Mr. Speaker, I stand before you today to offer an apology to former students of Indian American schools. Treatment of children in Indian American schools is a sad chapter for our people. Two primary objectives of the residential school system were to remove and isolate children from the influence of their home, family, situations, cultures, and to assimilate them into the dominant culture. These objectives were based on the assumption that Aboriginal cultures, the spiritual beliefs, inferiority and money. Indeed, some saw it as was impolite to set to kill the Indian American child. And the approximately eighty thousand living former students and all family members in Canada, the Government of Canada now recognizes that it was wrong. It forcibly removed children from their homes, and we apologize for having done it. We now recognize that separating children from their families, we undermine the ability of many to adequately protect their own children, and so deceive the generations who follow. We apologize for having done this. We now recognize that far to wrong. These institutions gave rise to abuse or neglect and were inadequately controlled. And we apologize for failing to protect them. The Government of Canada sincerely apologizes and asks to forgive that the Aboriginal peoples of this country were failing on people so profoundly. Not only did you suffer these abuses of children, but as you became parent, you were powerless to protect your own children from suffering the same experience. And for this, we are sorry. And for this, we are sorry. And for this, we are sorry. And for this, we are sorry.
Dexter's sanctuary.
That's a well verbal. You know, when we look at, you know, in a lot of communities, Leftbridge, Carstens, Fort MacLeod, and the other surrounding communities, what we see on the streets is probably the impact. And if anybody would go up and try to take the time to listen, you would probably hear stories of, "Well, I watched my father." When, when I mention that the next generation is looking on, well, we grew up under a mother and father who probably were survivors of residential school. What kind of impact were they providing us? If, if they themselves were alcoholics or drug abusers, and the kids grow up in that environment, is it really the kids' fault? They've grown up in an environment that they're trying to adjust. And in most cases, they try to function in a very dysfunctional world. And that's all it is. And sometimes those addictions, like anybody that has problems, those addictions take over eventually. And it becomes up to that individual. Can this person have the right mind to say, "I wanna change"? It's really up to them. Because the, the services are there. The services are there. But do they want that? Or are they impacted so much? The boxers that I, I spoke of in the community here in Moses Lake, they, they talked a lot about their home life. And there was one girl who was, who tried so hard at every practice, gave one hundred and ten percent. But you think that lasts very long? The real, even the high, the natural high you get from a good workout, you think that lasts very long? She walked home to holes in the wall, or busted windows, alcoholism, drug abuse. She's really given a good chance like everybody else. Unless you're strong enough. And that's, and that's what I was trying to put into them. They are strong enough, just believe a little bit. I grew up in what they, I'm not sure if you all, well, I'm sure you wouldn't. There's a place called Devil's Corner. It's a nickname in the, in the, in the native community of a certain street in Leftbridge. Well, that's where I grew up. The townsite community in Standoff. I went from there to there. I wasn't really given an opportunity, but go back to a boxing coach who said, "You got what it takes, pat me on the back." Or the rodeo coach afterwards, "You got what it takes, pat me on the back." Just those few people in my life can do that. So if they can do that, imagine what others can do for this community here in Moses Lake, in Standoff, in Leftbridge. It could be native or non-native. The gym teacher that I had is non-native, big influence in my life. The college rodeo coach down in Southern Idaho, non-native, big influence in my life. So we can all play a part. We just choose not to, or we choose to. Hopefully, we can come away with a good, a good message to them and some support to back that up. These kids here, they need that. Like I said, they don't have anything. Never been in a Boston pizza. How many times have we done that? How many times have we gone to Calgary, Edmonton? They don't have that. So little things that we can probably do, not only on our end, but everybody's, everybody. Like I said, I had non-natives say, "Take me under their wing and say, 'You got what it takes.' Do something." For those here and on the streets here, I know it's, it's a sad thing, and you don't just, you're not the only ones to see it. We see it as well. We have to deal with it. We're trying to deal with it. But again, the, the impact of residential school is so recent. I'm only, I'm not gonna tell you my age. But it's, it's so recent. And there's many survivors walking around out there. And there's many of those who are raised by residential school survivors who are so, you know, impacted so deeply. They're not being raised in a proper environment. They're not being raised in a proper environment. They think they are. But like I said, they're trying to function in a very dysfunctional world.
Dexter, thank you so much.
So that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that message of awareness that you're bringing to our council. It's very important for us all to understand the impact of past generation on present generation. And you're right, some are able to get out of that misery and some are in it and don't know how to get out of it. I appreciate what you're saying. Councilor Freed.
Dexter, I wonder if you could just help me a little bit with the timeline, at the risk of divulging your age. You know, I went to school, you know, in Carstens Public Schools with, you know, remember, you know, from the Blood Reserve. But when did that end?
Nineteen fifty-eight.
Residential schools, when did they stop going?
The last residential school closed in nineteen eighty-six.
Yeah, the last residential school closed in eighty-six.
Eighty-six? But they weren't required to go that time, were they?
No. When I went to school here, that was in nineteen seventy-two. So just a couple of years before that.
Did they have been requiring, now, what? Did they require them at certain, like elementary school? Or, that's what I'm trying to understand. Because like I say, I had, you know, people from the Blood Reserve went to school with me.
Yeah, no, and those are the very fortunate ones who were able to bypass that and go to the surrounding communities such as Forma Cloud and Carstens and Lethbridge. There are some of those that didn't go. But some, they were locked in with the Indian agents. And if they didn't send their kids to school, they were going to go to jail. But also, you're also now dealing with how many generations since that started.
Right.
So those that went from the first generation, okay, I went to residential school. Now you go to residential school. Now it almost became a, like I said, you're functioning in a very dysfunctional world.
Councilor Edmonds.
Did they have anything on the reserve, like a Big Brother, Big Sister organization that could help some of these young kids to excel?
They've had, I'm not sure about the Big Brothers and Big Sisters, but they have Boy Scouts, they've had youth clubs. The recreation department has tried so many different things as far as putting basketball, baseball together. Hockey is one of them that, of course, it's been around with us for a long time.
See, like Big Brothers is more of a one-on-one.
Yeah, yeah.
You're a coach or a guide to help them through.
Not officially being called that, but, you know, little similar forms of that and associated with other things.
Well, thank you very much. I'd like to shake your hand. Thank you very much for your help for us.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. We'll stay in touch.
Be back.
Thank you. Have a safe trip back home. Well, we now have our next delegation, Denise Norton. Denise, I'm sorry we're twenty minutes late, but you still will have your ten minutes.
Well, mine won't be anywhere near as exciting or interesting as that my presentation, I promise you.
Denise is coming to talk about the Early Childhood Mapping Project. Essentially, she's coming to talk to us about the government cutting the funding for that Early Childhood Mapping Project. That project was a way for educators to come to understand where children were at in terms of development in their very first year of schooling. And Denise felt it was a very important program to help children develop to their fullest potential. And she is really coming in, I think, to seek support, to see that project still carry on. Denise, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Well, I understand I have ten minutes, so this is a very diverse program with all kinds of aspects to it. And so I guess basically what I have to say to you is that I'm coming today to give you the statistics of the assessment that was done on our children over the last five years. Since the nineteen nineties has been the explosion of information on research on how children develop. We've always known that the first five years are important. But since all this research has been done, they now recognize that, hey, it's more than important. And that what happens to a child between conception and the age of five can make a big difference. And so tonight, I've given you a handout that gives the latest results of the ECHMAP assessment. Let me do, maybe ask questions afterwards, like what is the ECHMAP assessment? So I can, we can just go through the results and then go from there. But the early years are critical. And you need to know that one in four children throughout across Canada are experiencing difficulty or great difficulty in their development by kindergarten. So the question is, what can we do as communities to change that? So if you turn to, if you just turn to the front of this, you just go straight into the, oh, I'm sorry. I should be touching.
Now, maybe you want to talk about the different elements of the studies that were done.
Of the assessment, yes. You need to know too that the assessment that was done was from the Offered Centre for Child, Early Child Development at the Master University. And it's scientifically validated study and it's been used all over the world. And so it's not just a, you know, hit-and-run type thing. Okay, so if you, so they focused on five different areas. I'm sure not doing very well. He'll go on there. They focused it on five different areas. This assessment was done six months after the children had been in kindergarten. So the kindergarten teacher had got to know them. The kindergarten teacher did the assessment. And then the results were sent up to Edmonton. The Alberta Ed had contracted the University of Alberta to do this. And so we had some preliminary results and then we had the 2014 results, which are the final results. Unfortunately, this new Minister of Education has cut the assessment side of the whole deal. So we've got a baseline, but now we have nothing to measure if we're making a difference. So there's been, there's been all kinds of us sending hundreds of letters up to Edmonton to say, "Hey, this doesn't make sense." They've offered a grant, they've offered a bridge grant to the coalitions, which is who I am. But anyway, it doesn't make sense. But then often it doesn't, right? So the first area, the orange, if you take a look, this is, first of all, the coalition that we're talking about, my coalition when I was High To Be Coordinator, is basically the same as the Westwind School Division. As it happens, it's a coincidence that that's the way it is. And by the way, I'm not wearing a school board trustee hat. This has nothing to do with Westwind School Division, okay? Except they hold the money for us, okay? So, and then it goes on to Rentham, I think. So that is my coalition area. And so this, see this circle here? This is the measurement of how children have done in this specific area within the coalition. We are B. We're in Area B. And so this is our result in this particular area. And so in physical health and wellbeing, it's basically that a child is well-rested, well-nourished, can sustain energy levels, is physically independent, and has developed gross motor skills and fine motor skills. Okay, so that's what that one is measuring. Okay, and so as you can see, in the coalition area, twenty-three, well, seventy-six percent of our children are doing just great. But twenty-three percent are not doing so well. In our own area, twenty percent of our children are either experiencing difficulty or great difficulty in the area of physical health and wellbeing. For social competence, again, if you look at the bottom circle, social competence is that the child plays, gets along with others, is curious, likes to explore, and respects adult authority, and is able to control his or her behavior. Now, you're going to find a lot of these categories overlap. And I guess the people who did the assessment understand that. I don't, but that's okay. And so, again, for our area, eighty-three percent of our children are doing just fine. But there's seventeen point one percent of our children who are either experiencing difficulty or great difficulty. Dr. Robin Gibb, who's been coming to make presentations, she is an associate professor at the University of Lethbridge. And she's in the Department of Neuroscience. And she specializes in the brain development of children from conception to five, said that we should, as a community, be concerned. And we've tried to find out what we need to do to help improve this for our children. The next one, the green one, is emotional maturity.
If we could move on, Denise. I'm just trying to figure out, in an area C, why are they doing so much better than the rest of the areas?
Just pay attention to us. Area C is McGrath. And don't forget that if there is a smaller part, that's going to affect the percentage. But, and then D is Raymond and E is Sterling. But we can't compare ourselves. Thanks, you know? I mean, there is one that you're going to be very happy to compare us with. Okay, so I'm already teasing you, Counselor Barnes. Okay, so, so again, emotional, I talked to you about emotional. No, emotional maturity is that the child is able to express their emotions at an age-appropriate level and shows that they are developing empathy. Okay, so again, eighty-three percent of our children are doing great. Seventeen, no, seventeen point one. Did we do that one already? Some similar statistics. Counselor Barnes, maybe look at Sterling at E. Then you won't feel as bad.
Yeah, well, I'm just, because I have three grandfathers and grandsons there.
Oh dear, don't look at Sterling there. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay, the purple is language and thinking skills. And that is that the child is interested in learning to read and write and can count and recognize some shapes and colors. And so again, we seem to have the seventeen point one percent stuck, don't we? But again, seventeen point one, seventeen point one percent. And I don't want to just dwell on the negative by talking about the children that aren't achieving, but those are the children that we need to be concerned about. Because these statistics represent individual kids. And it's easier when we talk about percentage to say, "That's just a bunch of kids." But each one is a child with hopefully a...
So it's one in five. They're falling to the base as one in four.
Yes, and over Canada, that's what they're saying, is that one in four children is suffering, is hurting.
Does this also take in homeschool kids?
No, homeschool children were not.
Were not surveyed in this?
No, because they don't usually have kindergarten.
This is kindergarten.
This is six months after they've started kindergarten, yes. Yes.
However, I can say from experience that Denise's committee is well-represented by all.
Well-represented. I am supported a million percent by the homeschool community. I couldn't do what we've done without them. So, yeah, that's absolutely true. So thank you for mentioning that. And they're very interested in this, you know? Because even though the children weren't part of it, they realize their children live in this community and they have a responsibility to be helping us too, you know? So, okay. And then the last one, the yellow one, is communications and general knowledge. And this one's a scary one. To me, this is a scary one. So communication and general knowledge is that the child is able to communicate needs and wants in a socially appropriate way, can tell stories, and has general knowledge about the world that again is age-appropriate. So they're not expecting to know who the Prime Minister of India is, but they have some knowledge of the world around them that is age-appropriate. And as you can see, thirty-three point seven percent of our children are struggling in this area. And so I've come here tonight because I believe, well, I know that community, that this is of significance to community, to the community as it is to myself as a coordinator, to parents, and that a child isn't raised in isolation. Of course, the family and the home is the most important, but the community is important. And studies have shown that children who are raised in nurturing, strong communities, supportive communities, do a lot, lot better. And so while I'm not saying that our community is not supportive, obviously, we have some work to do to be able to reach out to these children. I do know that a lot of the services that are available have been cut from the preschool children. It always seems that it's the little kids where the money's cut, the dollars are cut by the government. And so a lot of families have to travel to Lethbridge to receive help from different agencies. And right now, gas is okay and we're all cheering. I don't know if that's a good or bad thing, that gas is okay. But often, these families can't afford to go into Lethbridge twice a week. Or they have other little kids at home. And so babysitting's an issue. And so, you know, I would like us to maybe, as a community, look at what's happening in our community and go from there.
Yes. Denise, can I ask you? When you talk about those different programs, are there programs that are possibly funded through FCSS or new programs that should be brought forward? Or has that been an attempt to bring a program forward?
Yes, mostly.
I know you have tiny talks and all, you have this type of thing, but you had logics and different kind of thing like that. What else can you see needed in a community in terms of programming?
Well, there's a lot of the health and like the speech therapy. Like speech therapists does come, I think, once a month. I think it was, now, and that may have changed. The occupational therapists, the physical therapists, the parents often have to travel to Lethbridge to receive help that way. We used to, the health unit used to work with the town. And you'd know better that, Ms. Marion, about helping mothers learn how to cook.
That's through the FCSS.
That's through FCSS.
There was no support on...
Right, and that's half the problem. Like, how do we reach the people that need to be reached? And this is something that I hope we can get into a conversation about. Because, you know, it's the people that need the help that we can't reach always. You know, we've been having a series of workshops and having specialists come out. And they've been very well-supported, and I'm hoping to continue them. They've been, you know, about once a month in Cardston. Mostly, the parents have been asking for information on brain development. But we also have, they've given me a whole list of specialists who like to come in and make a presentation. But, you know, are we getting the parents that really need to hear this? It's the old story, right? And so it's sort of a conundrum. And it's something that I'm hoping that, as a community, we can address and see how we can reach out to some of these people. I know that when I was on FCSS, we talked about poverty. And how do you reach out to people, you know, in poverty? They're not going to come put their hand up and say, well, I, you know, I need some help. Most aren't. And so we've got to figure out a way of reaching these families. Yes.
I'm just wondering, this study was done with kindergarten children.
Yes.
And I mean, we know all across Canada, you're saying, you know, there's about 20 to 25% that aren't ready. I mean, I'm thinking, you know, for one thing, the bar has been raised a whole lot. When I went to grade one, I felt really proud I could count to 10. Now, I've got two and three-year-olds that can do that and probably read. There's also a difference in developmental level for all kids. They don't all mature at the same rate.
Absolutely.
We have seven children. And we have everything from a kindergartner who can read better than her 10th-grade brother to, you know, boys that just weren't really ready, you know.
Absolutely.
We had to send to grade one twice just because they weren't ready to learn. So, you know, and they were in the same family and we treated them the same. So I'm just wondering, you know, if studies have been done, you know, like at 10 years old and 12 years old to see if things change, you know, if they catch up. You know, kids do catch up.
Absolutely, and that's something that we'd like to have continued. And maybe if we can change the ministry's mind.
Denise, I have one question. Because it was done in schools, in our local schools, what is a follow-up to this study at all school level? Now that those children have been identified as lacking readiness for learning or for being a social human being? So what is being done at our school level? Because now we have a very precise study, which children identify, and how do we start to help those children?
The children were not identified, Mayor. It was not done, like, it wasn't about individual children. It was done just to see how, in general, our community's children are doing.
It's almost unfortunate because it was a chance to help.
Absolutely, and what is unfortunate?
It's unfortunate.
Yes, and again, it's unfortunate that we're not going to be able to carry on and measure grade threes and measure the next kindergarten kids that are coming up. One of the things that we have learned is that getting on the floor and playing with your children is something that most parents, not most parents, many parents don't understand the significance of doing that. You know, the serve and return, you know, that there's a lot of the basic play skills because we're so sophisticated. You know, we have so many highfalutin stuff, you know, for our kids to do.
So what is really your request to council? What is it that we can help you with?
My request basically is, if I could, and I know that you're committed to death. I do know that, because I'm committed to death too with my stewardship. But I would like to have a representative from the council work with us so that we can have maybe more clout, more credibility because of that. And also to, you know, we're just a small group struggling to do this. And so I'm also asking the county for somebody from the county that would help us identify the needs of the children and what we need to be doing.
Is FCSS the right venue to help you with that?
Yes and no. FCSS can only do certain amounts.
They are preventative, that's their mandate.
On one of trend.
FCSS is helping us. We've applied for funding for next year so that we can take programs out to Hillspring and Glenwood and areas where, you know, save families having to try and drive in. Because we're finding that most of the people that come to us, to all our lecture series and workshops, are from Cardston. And I've had people say, you know, I wish I could come, blah, blah, blah. And so FCSS is helping that way.
So you're looking for an elected official, is that what you're looking for?
Yes.
Okay, so we will have to discuss that proposal. Thank you. Councilor Banbury, you want to add something?
Denise, in my younger years, quite a few years ago, we started a program called Books for Babies. Is that still...
That's still mine.
And we found very great success out of that when those young mothers would read to their babies, even in the womb.
Yeah, absolutely.
They would sit there and read and listen to the music. They carried it out on the floor, playing on the floor and stuff like that. Then we evolved into another program, and it was an adult literacy program. And wanting to get these kids that have gone through high school, graduated, and still don't have those specialized skills. Now, I know the adult literacy program is still going, the Aware Program through Cathy Richards. Is there an area that you can get into there with your parents and work on literacy programs, education programs, to know how to play with your kids? And know how to sit down and speak to them and things like that?
Yeah, there has been a suggestion that we try to enlist the schools. And, you know, I mean, their curriculum is so tight, but we thought even in the CAMH, is it CAMH? I can't say it the way you pronounce it, but how do you say it? CAMH, the CAMH programming, maybe do something there. Yeah, and this is kind of off-topic. But one of the reasons why I ran for the school board was because I was concerned how many children don't graduate? And are we reaching out to them? So that's a whole separate issue that I have, but I am working on that too.
You're getting them on both ends.
I'm hoping to. So this is, sorry, I should give this to you first. This is just an idea I had to, that I'm just going to leave with you. I don't have any copies, but...
So we will look at what you brought and we will discuss that.
Okay, thank you.
And we will let you know.
Okay.
I mean, that program is your passion, I know. And we appreciate the fact that you're trying to help the young children.
Thank you.
People grade three, if they don't read or understand math, they're in trouble, we know that.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, it sounds like we're going to discuss later, but the specifics of what you're asking, you're wanting a member of councils to be part of, what, monthly meetings?
Yeah, and they don't have to come to monthly, but we've got a voice from council.
So kind of just to represent the group and back to council and vice versa?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Where do you meet?
We meet usually about the fourth Thursday of the month, but we're a bit haphazard, I have to admit, because everyone that helps may have family. You know, and so when we can pull a few together, I go for it. And then we just contact others by email or by phone. But there are many coalitions, and I'm not saying this as a guilt trip, please. There are many coalitions that do have representation from the towns and from the counties. There's a lot of other people I'm going to speak to to ask because we've invited them generally, but that hasn't happened. So we need, like, for example, we don't have anybody from the library, which would be, you know, for literacy and helping, it would be a great asset to us. Anyway, I'll let you get on with your meeting because I don't want to take all your time.
Thank you for bringing this information to us.
Thank you, thank you for your interest in it.
Thank you. Okay, we need to have a short break.
We recess before a short break.
Five minutes.
Yep.
Take your own favor.
Thank you.
The race is on.
Very jealous, friend.
Yes.